I would like to call to order our special board meeting for Friday, June 21st, 2013. And I begin, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Cash, would you do us the honor?
Please, yeah. Ready, begin.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due justice for all.
President, I guess there's no one here ready to address, I guess I won't address the empty room.
The empty room, that's fine. I will say that we, so that our viewers know, that we do have Spanish translation and also we have equipment for anyone with a hearing impaired. We have Mr. Santana and Martha Corona here for Spanish translation should anybody need that. So, we are going to begin, and actually the bulk of our time we'll spend, with an audit procedures presentation today. And Mr. Te, would you like to make the introduction?
Yes, as you have met Royce Townsend from VTD, he will be doing the presentation today and/or the workshop, the audit, how to read an audit and understand. Thanks.
Well, good morning, and thank all of you for taking up my offer to come and provide you a little bit of information on the financial statements and how to read them. And really, the whole idea is to get a little bit more comfortable with them. Oftentimes, it's, there's so much information in here that it just kind of overwhelms you. And so, the intent is to kind of provide you a little bit of information as to how the audit report is intended to read and the areas that you really most probably should focus on. So, we'll start with that and we'll move forward with what's in the report. Now, before I start about what's in the report, let me just give you some information that's what's not in the report. Okay, the report is always as of a specific date. It's a point in time. In the case of the report that we're going to look at, which is your last year report, that point in time was June 30th, 2012. Okay? So, obviously, a whole lot of activity occurs after you close your books and when we present the report. In fact, I'll remind you that I believe we've presented the report to you in January of 2013. Report was as of June 30th, 2012. You're required to close your books, complete them by September 15th, 2012, and then subsequent to that, we audit it and then we come out and we do the presentation. So, it's really a point in time. We, it's the opinions that we're going to talk about don't really say, or are not intended to say, everything is perfect. That's not the intent of the audit. The audit is to provide you reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. Okay? So, the items that are not in the report are just as important as to what's in the report. Okay, so what's in the report? The most important aspect of it from my standpoint is the opinions. So, we offer three specific opinions to these audited financial statements. The financial statement opinion as a whole, this is looking at the organization as a whole, which also at that point, we report on the internal controls and other compliance areas that we may find. Federal awards, if you expend over $500,000 of federal monies, we're required to report on that, offering you an opinion, as well as state awards. The state provides additional monies for you, such as class size reduction is a great example of one program that you receive money for and were required to test. And so, we also have an opinion related to that as well. So, these are the three specific areas, and I say "specific" to your school district, that we will opine on. So, with that, let's talk about briefly the financial statements. Everything that's in the audit report is required. So, there's some sort of oversight agency that's suggesting that this is the required format. For the government, for the financial statements as a whole, that's GAAP, that's governmental accounting procedures, meaning that in order for you to be, to issue this report in compliance with GAAP, it has to follow a specific format. And that format is the government-wide statements, which are intended to put you on the same level playing field as, for instance, for-profit companies. However, the world where you really live in is the fund financial statements. And that information comes directly as a result of our audit of your unaudited actuels, your Saks data. Then, following that is required information such as footnote disclosure. It has to be in there, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that. There's required schedules that are required to be in there, such as your budget information and financial trends. And these are areas that I typically talk or focus upon when I perform the audit presentation to you. And at the end, there's always a summary, and that summarizes the opinions that we talked about in the previous slide, plus any findings. One thing I do want to ask of you is, as we go through this and we touch upon any pages within the audit report, please don't hesitate to ask me questions because that's the best way of kind of addressing right at the moment. I know for myself, if I don't ask the question right then, I'll forget it two minutes later. So, please, you're not interrupting me or my flow at all. So, I talked about this when I was here last time, but I just want to reemphasize. What is an audit? We're providing reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free or material misstatement. As simple as that. The auditor opinion, let me put it to you this way, the auditor opinion is the only thing in that audit report that's mine. Everything else in that audit report is yours, meaning that it's information derived from what we received from you, required information. But, the only thing that's mine is the auditor's opinion. The unqualified opinion is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. And as I said previously, we get through a whole process of risk assessment. We first start learning your internal control structure, how it works, how it's supposed to work, what you're telling us, that we understand and review it, and then we perform tests of transactions in its simplest, in its simplest methodology that we can identify. But, that's how we get to identifying and form an opinion as to your financial statements. So, with that, we're going to take a look at this document, which is your audited financial statements. So, let's first turn to page two. As you can see, this is the independent auditor's report. Once again, this is, this is mine. I mentioned to you the unqualified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance. But, that doesn't mean that we always provide an unqualified opinion. We have three other opinions that we could be providing you. And as I said earlier, the highest level of assurance is unqualified. So, as you go down in that shortlist of four, it gets progressively worse. If we had a qualified opinion, we're qualifying a certain aspect or section of the audit. In years past, before we had to start incorporating the fixed assets of the district, the capital assets, your buildings and your land and what have you into the audit report as a component of the audit report, you may have not included them, and you would have had a qualification as a result of that. Now, they're a normal part of your audit. A disclaimer to the opinion is basically, we're disclaiming a certain part of the audit report that we're not very comfortable with. This is not uncommon either. The one that I can remember that we disclaimed was a school district's ADA, because the attendance could not be tested. Now, when you disclaim your ADA, for your district, it's not as big of an issue. For a district that's dependent on revenue limit funding, it's a huge issue because that's primarily all their funding. So, when we disclaim their ADA, we're basically telling them they're in serious trouble. And an adverse opinion is where we basically have no confidence in the financial information that we're receiving, and we are not going to disclaim it. We're just going to tell you that we don't believe that this information is, can fairly represent the financial position of the district. Yes?
I guess, just as we going, as we go along, just to have a little more detail on the examples, when you talk about disclaiming somebody's ADA, and you say, because it couldn't be tested.
Right.
Was that because they kept such poor records?
Absolutely.
That you couldn't go back?
And, and it's also oftentimes a system issue, meaning that, just like any system that you, here, let me give you a, for instance, we all know Microsoft Word. Wonderful system. But, if we don't know how to use Microsoft Word, it's kind of useless for us. An accounting or attendance system is a lot of moving parts. And so, there needs to be a high level, not only of training of the personnel that are using it, but you have to understand the parts that are in that. In this particular case, the information that was coming out of the system for attendance, we could not verify by our onsite testing, meaning that the information that we were getting at the site level for the attendance did not correlate to the information that was being generated at the district level, which was the information that was being reported to the state. And that would not have been just a single occurrence. That would have been a systematic sort of issue, where every single site that we went to, and for every single month that we were testing, we were finding the same high level of errors. At that point, you have a lack of confidence in the information that you're receiving, and you have to choose, either do you do more testing, or do you come to the conclusion that you cannot rely on that information? Hopefully, that-
And I want to follow up on that question. So, what if, what happens when you do find something like that? Does that then come back to the board, for the board to tell the superintendent and the district something needs to change? Do you report it to some state agency of sorts? Do both happen, or?
Oh, okay. The disclaimer of the opinion, in this case, would almost always be represented by a significant deficiency, or in this case, more of a material weakness. Now, I'll talk more about those terms when we talk about findings. But, absolutely, it would be an area that you would be notified. Now, I would bet you that in this case, the minute that we go to your business management and say to them, "We're going to disclaim your attendance," they're going to notify the governing board, because that, once again, puts into question all of your funding related to attendance and significant impact.
Can I add something to that? And also, that, since we're going to a new attendance software system, that will be tested by VTD when they come here after we've been on it for a year. So, just to reassure you.
Just to reassure the public, that hasn't happened in our district. We're just speaking-
That's correct. It has not happened and will not happen.
Yeah, it's very, I mean, it's not uncommon for school districts to change accounting systems, attendance systems. I mean, but that's the part of the audit function. We test every single aspect to that. So, it will be tested. Okay, so, those are, as I said, the four different sort of opinions that we may offer. And once again, yours was an unqualified opinion. Now, I do note on the second bullet from the bottom, emphasis of matter. We, as an audit firm, have the ability to emphasize a particular situation in the opinion itself, and we have chosen to do that on page 57. But, on page two, you'll see, as disclosed or discussed in the notes, the basic financial statements, "The State of California continues to suffer the effects of a recessionary economy, which directly impacts the funding requirements of the State of California to K-12, to the K-12 educational community." And we, as the auditors, have a requirement to footnote or to alert the reader if we believe there's an economic dependency issue. Well, certainly, in the past six years, that has been the case. And so, we have chosen to emphasize that to the readers with this line item in your opinion. And if you turn back to page 57, on note number 18, that's where that specific disclosure emphasizing this particular issue has been elaborated on. So, this is the opportunity for the audit function to put forward additional information in the opinion that we think is relevant to the school district, and in fact, is relevant to the educational community as a whole. So, that's where that rests. And if you read through that, and we'll talk about that a little later on, it doesn't affect you quite as much as it affects other school districts because you have a unique funding structure. But, cash flow as a result of the deferrals and the deficit funding certainly, you know, have an impact on your funding. So, that's where we've chosen to do that. Now, had we had any significant or deficiencies or material weaknesses, remember I told you that we have a report on internal control that has to be included as part of this? And let me just turn you to that page briefly. I thought I had that tagged here, but I see I have. That's on page 77. Because this is an audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards, not only do we offer you the independent auditor's report, but we have to report on comply, internal controls, page 77, if we had noted any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we would have had to report them. I'm sorry, that was on page 75. I apologize. That is reported correctly there. We had none. That's the good news. Now, we'll talk more about the management letter that we've included in here with what we call controlled deficiencies. That's the follow. But, once again, if we had any reportable conditions related to significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, they would have been footnoted on page 75 or 76. Okay? That's the format that we're required to use. So, on page 77, since we're right there, that is our independent report on federal compliance. This opinion also was unqualified. And once again, it could use the four different formats or conclusions that I mentioned earlier, qualified disclaimer or adverse as well. Unqualified opinion, just to provide you some information, which is also summarized on the summary of auditor's results, we tested five major federal programs. How do we determine them to be major? Well, once again, the threshold to even test your district for federal compliance is $500,000 of federal awards expended. And then, from there, we look at them and we say, which are the programs that have a high dollar amount that exceed $300,000? So, we have to group all of those federal programs that exceed $300,000 in federal expenditures. And then, we break it down even further and look at them and say, has the oversight agencies, such as the Department of, US Department of Agriculture, notified us that this is a high-risk program or not? If that's not the case, and they're all just over $300,000, then we have to do a risk assessment on them, determining whether or not they are high-risk or low-risk. Factors might be, is it a new program to the district? Is there a lot of expenditures that are payroll-related? On and on and on. We eventually identify a number of high-risk programs, and in this case, we identified five. And those are identified specifically, and I'll turn you to that page. On page 82, on the summary of auditor's results, we included the Limited English Proficiency Program, Immigrant Education Program, the State Fiscal Stabilization Fund, the Special Education Cluster, and the Child Nutrition Cluster. You'll see those in the middle of page 82. Those were the five programs. And when we test them, not only are we looking at internal control, but we're also looking specifically at compliance. We have to test two separate areas there. In this case, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls for any of those programs, nor were there any compliance issues noted. And I'll be, candidly, five programs is quite a bit for a district your size. It's just that you expended a lot of money, you had, you received a lot of monies and you expended it. So, we were required to test it. Unqualified opinion on that, federal awards. And then, on page 79, now you have the independent auditor's report on state compliance. And you'll see on page 79 and page 80, all of the state programs that we're required to test, if they are applicable to you, and the outcomes of those. And as you can see, we provided an unqualified opinion related to those as well. So, we test, as you can see, quite a bit of federal and state programs. And I will say that, let's just jump to page 85, because our opinion was unqualified for those, save for one state program that we had a particular issue that we identified, and that's on page 85, 2012-1, and that's for the ACES program. I will tell you this, I cannot think of any school district where we haven't had an ACES finding. It's a very common occurrence, and that's primarily because oftentimes, you are contracting with a third party for, to provide you those services. And that's why, because there's a third party involved with it, that's why the attendance and reporting is problematic for us. What we do is, we'll look to see whether or not the information that is being reported for attendance correlates to the supporting documentation. School districts do a really good job of that, specifically with attendance reporting. But, outside vendors oftentimes don't have the same level of requirements as far as documentation as school districts are required to maintain. So, as I said, this is not an uncommon comment.
Could I have a question on page 80? It talks about charter schools. And it looks like there's quite extensive review of charter schools. Is that a time-consuming thing, or is that, is it all paperwork, or do you actually make business to the charter schools?
Yes, yes. In fact, we always include one of your charter schools in our site visitation rotations because of the last five requirements there. You have a couple charter schools that are within your district. One now. Okay. That makes it a little bit different, because if you, if they're outside the school district, but we still had to report them as charters of the school district, it's kind of complicated. But, we wouldn't have to test these because they would have that testing done separately. But, because you have one within the district, we are required to visit that. And we test them for, a little differently, because their attendance oftentimes is a little different than what it might be for a school district. So, there's different sort of requirements. The good news is that there are requirements in here, because when charters first started, there were no requirements to be tested. But, as far as time-consuming, I don't know if it's any more time-consuming than what we would be spending as for your regular instructional classes. Okay, and then, once again, as I said, the recap, the great thing about the summary of auditor's results is that if you don't have the time to look at each of the individual opinions and you just want to get a recap of that information, it's all there for you on page 82. And in fact, if, I'll remind you that during the board presentation, I almost always bring you to this page, because I want to go through and identify your outcome as related to financial statements, federal awards and state awards, and it's all there. So, it's a nice tidy way of bringing it all together and looking at one page versus multiple pages. As I said, my belief is that the opinions related to how you perform in relation to the financial statements, federal awards and the state awards, is the most important aspect of the report that I believe you should focus on. But, that doesn't mean that's the only parts of the report that I think you should focus on. So, having said that, let's move back to page 14 and 15 of the audit report. And this is where we start looking at numbers. Okay, page 14 is your statement of net assets. And that's actually going to change, that terminology is going to change this year. The accounting profession is a, like, similar to education is a dynamic profession. It constantly changes. It's not static. This year, when I present to you, the statement will now be a statement of net position as a result of some terminology changes from our, from our oversight agency. But, on page 14, what this is, is an aggregation of all of the activity of the district into one particular column. When we get to the next set of statements, you're going to see it in the way that, that you close your books in. So, fund, page 14 is a required format, page 15 as well, statement of activities. And really, the only difference between these and your, and your fund statements that you live, live with, is that they take your fund statements and they add two specific areas. The focus on these statements, government-wide statements, is long-term. So, what they now bring in is your capital assets, which are intended to be long-term assets of the district, as well as your long-term obligations. And this is very similar to how a private company would report. Now, on page 15, you'll see the statement of activities. And this is different also, because now you're looking at things from a functional standpoint. Most of us have worked in a world where the California Account Code structure, we focused on what we called object codes. 1,000 is salaries for certificated employees, 2,000 salaries for classified employees, and on. Well, now, we've been required to report this on a functional basis, which is completely different. But, it provides us new information, such as, if you look at your expenses, expense column here, what, really what it's saying is, of your $148 million of overall expenses, expenses, I'm sorry, 66% of it relates to instruction. And that's based on the functional code accounting that you've established. And 5% of it relates to general administration. So, it's a totally different view of what we've looked at in the past. Conversely, revenues, if you look down at the bottom and it says general revenues, 84% of your general revenues come from taxes. That makes you a very unique district. 9% of your general revenue comes from the State of California. That would be your revenue limit. Very unique. I mean, I can tell you that, save for some of my basic aid districts, it's almost the converse. Yours is a very, you know, different sort of funding, creates different issues as a result. For those of us who have, who work from the State of Cali, or who depend on the State of California, well, you, you're really more subject to the deferrals. With taxes, you only receive those taxes a couple times during the year. So, you're almost having to be a little bit more careful with your revenues, because you only receive them periodically throughout the course of the year versus a specific funding schedule from the state. So, it's, it's nice on one hand, but it creates different sort of issues. Yes?
Just to be really specific, when you're saying 84% of your general revenue comes from taxes, for people that are viewing that, this presentation, you mean from our local property taxes?
Right. If you look at the line items, or, yes, the three line items that we're looking at is, property taxes represent about $87 million, and then you have taxes that are, are specific for debt service collections. That would be your general obligation bonds. So, you have a tax levy that supports that. And then, you have other taxes, and that's probably your parcel taxes, which represents $2 million. That, in the aggregate of your general revenue, that represents 84 million, 84%.
Okay, so, by general revenue, that doesn't mean general fund?
That doesn't mean general fund.
Gotcha, thank you.
That doesn't mean general fund at all. Good question.
A question on that, too. Do you ever consider putting percentages in that relate to these things in the report, or do we have to do the calculations ourselves to get to these percentages?
You would pretty much, unless those are identified within your management discussion and analysis, and I'd have to go back to take a look at that, the beginning of the report, because I jumped straight to the financial statements, the beginning of the report has what we call the management's discussion and analysis. And what it's intended to do is to break down this information in a more, from the numbers, into a more readable sort of format. And oftentimes, that information is represented in your management's discussion and analysis. And so, if I look at that, on page eight, it doesn't have necessarily the, the percentages, but what it talks, it aggregates some of these numbers for us. And it talks about $95.9 million is, is the amount in the aggregate from property tax collections. The $2.1 million from another funding source. And it really kind of identifies the specific funding sources of it, but as far as percentages, no.
In layman's terms, I often get the comment, "We paying way too much for administration." And it'd be nice to have, "Hey, we only pay 5%."
Yes.
That's a more interesting number to me than the dollar amount. I just, I'm just curious, because this is the first time I've seen it that clear.
We can certainly incorporate that into your audit report. Remember, this is your financial statements. I'm, I'm happy to include a column. If we look on page nine, we have total cost of services and net cost of services. The net cost would be as a result of any funding specific to those expenditures. We can certainly put in a column there that represents the percentages as it relates to the whole. And that's another level of information that you'd be providing.
To me, it just makes my job a lot easier, talking to people.
I have a follow-up question. Did I understand that you said that most basic aid school districts have the bottom reversed, so they, they're, they have more coming from the state than they do from?
No, you're right.
All right, okay.
More, most basic aid districts, actually, the number is even greater.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure that-
Right. So, you're not a basic aid district. Maybe this year you may have been, or last year you may have been. I don't remember. There was a year there because of some additional RDA monies. But, the thing is with basic aid districts is, to be a really strong basic aid district, you have to be well over the threshold. If you're just over the threshold, it doesn't really impact you quite the same way. But, basic aid districts, that number 84% would be even higher.
Even higher.
And the converse relationship in those numbers is when you're a more general sort of school district, where you're receiving most of your funding from the State of California.
And there's no magic percentage, is there?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, absolutely not.
I mean, the higher the better, but I just didn't know if it was like 79.8 that like?
No, there's, there's no number that, as a result, puts you into that. But you're right, the higher the number, it's better.
How much of this do you see changing as we move into our new funding formula?
I don't see this changing. Meg would probably have a better idea of it, because I haven't looked at the numbers quite. See, the new funding model is that, it's brand-new.
Yeah.
We're all just kind of guessing at this point where we're going with it. I think the impact of it to you is going to be less than how it will impact other school districts. Yes, I can say that pretty safely. I think it impacts high school districts a lot more than, negatively than it impacts, for instance, an elementary school district. For instance, a lot of funding in the new model is based on free and reduced counts. Well, as you know, to get high schoolers in the free and reduced category is very tough, right? So that's going to impact the 9 to 12 grade levels a lot more than it's going to impact the K through 8. You're being closer to the, being, not a revenue limit, a basic aid district, but being closer to it. It impacts you a little differently. But I haven't had a chance to look at it. Meg, as I said, is probably looking at it all the time.
Several times a day?
There's so many, the target date is for 2021. That's what we're supposed to get to, to be fully funded. If nothing changes during that time, we'll probably be more into revenue limit, because we're not deficit. The reason why we're so close is because we've been deficit. If, if the RDA dissolves in 2019, which it's projected to do, then that's more property taxes to us. So there's so many ins and outs that we don't know exactly yet. And I've, my calculation right now is that we'll pretty much, for next year, be held harmless for 13, 14. But not 100% sure until the math comes out.
For some of these, for some of the new requirements that I've seen up to this point in time, and of course, you know, all of it is yet to be resolved. But do you see some of those at this point in time being translated into tests that we will have, or that will be reflected in the audit?
Oh, you mean as far as new audit requirements?
Yes.
As a result? Yes, I do. And actually, I was speaking to that at a workshop yesterday. But I, I, I work, I'm part of the process as far as the audit guide, so I have a pretty good idea of where we're heading with it. I know this year, we're just, for 13, 14, we're going to just be looking at expenditures related to EPA. But as far as the new calculation, I have a sense that we're going to have to start testing your free and reduced counts. And the foster child, any sort of part of the new funding mechanism, I'm almost certain that there will be an audit requirement to test the validity of those numbers. Just as in the past, we've looked very closely at attendance, because that's what generates the revenue. So you have new factors that are being involved in the two different, you know, above the base for LCFF. I think that's where we're going to be heading. Yeah.
I just had a question. So to test it, what are you doing, going out and looking at the sites?
Well, that hasn't actually happened yet where we're required to. But what we would do is, we would look to see, my guess is, as far as, let's just use the free and reduce, because we do some testing with that. But whatever information the district is utilizing as, this is their free and reduced number. And I would have to think that it's going to be date-sensitive, meaning that there's a date, this is a cutoff. The information is, let's just say, October 31st right now is for verification of free and reduced counts. Then we'll look at that date, and then we'll, we would get a list of who you're claiming is free and reduced. And then we would look to see the supporting backup as far as household income, size of the families that are in the calculation to determine whether or not they're free and reduced. We already do that, actually, to a certain extent, with the National School Lunch Program testing, a federal program. But I can see that being a bit more involved. That's an example.
Mr. Herron, then Mr. Puss.
I was at a meeting last week where I got the impression that access to that information on free and reduced lunches is highly confidential and very, very limited access by anybody in the district can get to it. How does an auditor get to it?
It's a, it's a federal, it's a federal require, compliance requirement for us to test it. So I would have to think that there's something that allows us, because I have never been refused that information when we have tested that particular program. If by chance, just to give you a scenario, if by chance that we were denied that information because of some privacy requirement, the auditors, we would have a scope limitation. And that would be a modification to your opinion. But we've never crossed that threshold at all. We've always had access to that information.
Dr. Puss?
I thought I had it on. When they, so I'm assuming at this point in time, when all of that is said and done and sort of the dust settles and we get, you will get new audit guidelines to the new. I'm wondering how much, there are things obviously specific to financial statements and money in terms of the new funding formula. And then there's this sort of another layer that's maybe not necessarily directly tied to the funding, but there are requirements in terms of receiving the money. One of the things that has been put out there is sort of the involvement of parents in terms of looking at the plan that the district will propose in order to use the extra funding. Does, do you see that being incorporated into the audit of checking that?
Only, the only thing that goes into the state audit guide for testing has to be supported by statutory requirements that it is audited. So unless there was that specific statutory requirement that it requires an audit, it would not be incorporated in the normal audit process. Yes. No, and typically, that's because there's, there's a dollar amount attached to it, or what we call apportionment impact to the program that, as a result of that. There are some that aren't. I'll give you an example, the ACIS program is a great example of a program that, it was a very popular program by our former governor. He pushed it through, got it, you know, so now we receive a level of funding for it. But it was also included within the language, an audit requirement, and that's why we test it.
So I'm just trying to understand how much is here? How much I need to look somewhere else in order to see if we're complying with something related to the funding, but not necessarily tied to it?
Yeah, I would suggest to you that, what I mentioned earlier, that I see this, our testing kind of morphing more into looking at the factors that relate to funding. That's where I would see the information as represented in the financial statements. It's meant to be a financial statement audit. There are compliance components to that. But what you're talking about right now, I don't know if that's the information you're going to find that in the audit report, unless, once again, a statutory requirement exists.
Thank you.
Let's move to your fund financial statement, because as I said earlier, this is really the world where you live. Balance sheet and statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. We only report, the format is, is that we only report on your major funds. So if you turn to page 16, your general fund, your general operating fund is always a major fund. It's the, the focus is always going to be on your general operating fund. And you can only have one general operating fund. The other two funds that you see representing in here, your building fund and your county school facilities fund, are there because mathematically, the, either the assets liabilities, revenues or expenditures within those funds represent a significant portion of the overall. So that's why they're included. All other funds, if they don't qualify as a major fund, are aggregated and are included in the non-major governmental fund column. So that's where they're at. But I always say, I mean, when I get questions all the time, I'm, from a governing board, I almost always know that you're talking about the general fund. So what would I focus on? For most school districts, I'm always focusing on cash. You hear the terminology all the time, cash is king. Well, there's a reason why we say that, right? Now, if you look at the general fund, and you look at the total assets of $12.7 million, you'll see your cash position as of June 30th. And you'll notice that the largest asset that you have, $8 million, is receivables. It represents 65% of your current assets, 65%. Well, you obviously can't spend what you don't have. And what a receivable is, is it's basically, you're going to get the money, but you don't have it yet. I told you, or mentioned footnote disclosure. So I'm going to provide you, give you some insight to how this works. So we're required to give you some more information as to what that $8.2 million represents. So if you turn to page 38 of your audit report, you'll see that we've represented to you and presented more information as to the makeup or the sources for those receivables. And pretty much, each of these balance sheet items back on page 16 has a similar footnote that provides more information, unless there is no more information to provide you. So on page 38, you'll see the general fund. You'll see that apportionment only represents a little over $800,000 of that $8 million, 10%, which is a great number, by the way. But it's really, I mean, you have a nice mixture of different items that are represented as far as your receivables. You have some federal awards that you haven't received yet, as well as some state awards, some lottery monies. You have some monies due from your charter schools, as well as due from the cities, and that would be your RDA monies, and then other local sources. It's not one thing, which, when I look at receivables, that's what I'm looking at. Most school districts, of this $8 million, 7.8 of it would have been monies from apportionment. It would have been a significant amount. You're, like I say, your funding is a little different than other school districts, and that's why you only have $800,000 that is related to apportionment. So you have a lot of different sources. It's like, think of it like this, it's like people owe you money, but only one person owes you money. And so you're kind of dependent on that one person taking care of it. Well, you have a number of sources, so it's a little less of an impact to you when you have multiple sources that, that you're looking for from those funding sources. But that's the sort of information that you can get from your financial statements. You know, I also like to say, what's not on a balance sheet? Well, you don't have a current loan or a trans on page 16. So that meant that at the end of the year, you didn't need a short-term loan in order to pay your bills. That's a good thing as well. Now, it's not to say that you don't incorporate that as part of your normal practice. We'll talk about that in a moment. But June 30th came along, because you, primarily because you had a little amount that was owed from the state, you were able to meet your obligations as they became due. So that's, that's a positive. And that's the sort of thing, as an auditor, I'm always looking at. So current loans is something that, a liability that I would be looking for on your financial statements. That kind of tells you, gives you an indicator of how true your cash position is. Once again, this is something that's not here. By its absence, I consider that to be a good thing.
How do we know, how do we note its absence? Is there a place where it says zero?
Sure, sure. Under liabilities and fund balance, you'll see the category liabilities. You see the accounts payable, this is amounts due to vendors, due to other funds is amounts due to other funds. And then deferred revenues, revenues that you received, but yet you can't recognize because you haven't spent it yet. If there was any other liabilities, current loans would be underneath there.
Okay.
That's where it would be included. So that's a good question, because I'm saying, what's not on your balance sheet? Well, how would you know that it's not? So hopefully, that provides you a little bit of insight into your, your balance sheet there. Okay, so, I don't know if I said this to you, but let's just turn the page to page 18. And this is your, what we call your income statement, but your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And you'll see you ended the year in your general fund with a change in fund balance of almost $200,000. But as I always like to say, you know, remember that the goals here are a little different. When you're in the private sector, everybody's worried about the bottom line. The governmental sector, really, your focus is on the quality of the services that you're providing. It's not necessarily a dollar, a net profit focus. It's not intended to be. It shouldn't be. But that is why we focus primarily on the general fund, because that's where most of those services are being provided out of. And that's why you always have to look and be concerned with cash solvency, because your ability to provide that level of services is predicated on you having a certain amount of cash to pay for those services, primarily when 80 to 90% of those services are provided by, are really supported by your payroll expenditures. So hopefully, that makes some sense there. Okay, so I started talking a little bit about footnote disclosure. Those are represented, you can see quite a few pages, are 25 through 57. And as I said, everything on your balance sheet really should have some sort of disclosure to provide you a greater level of detail behind that number. So if you turn to page 25, and I'll just walk through this. You have your summary of significant accounting policies. It identifies you as the reporting entity. Do you have any other related entities such as charter schools? It talks about your major funds and your non-major funds. Do you have any other sort of funds? For instance, like proprietary funds, that would be if you have a self-insurance sort of program. Fiduciary funds, those would be your ASBs and any other sort of trust funds. Talks about your basis of accounting. All of your, once again, your balance sheet, and then, once again, significant accounting policies. If you have any specific, they're identified here. And then it goes into, once again, the balance sheet. It follows the balance sheet. It talks about on page 35, deposits and investments. 37 talks about the custodial credit risk for deposits. And I don't know if I brought this to your attention during the board meeting, but as you know, because you're a public agency, your funds are covered to a certain extent. However, there's always greater levels of insurance that you can receive. FDIC ensures balances up to a certain amount. And so this talks to, on page 37, that. We talked about page 38, receivables, and how it really kind of breaks it down to a greater level. Your capital assets, it talks about the ins and outs, what you acquired, what you would have disposed of. Pages 40 and 41, or what we call your inter-fund activity, your due-tos and due-froms between funds. And on page 41, your operating transfers. And you'll see, it's hot, it speaks to where you moved money on a, it could be a temporary basis, it could be a permanent basis. But for instance, the general fund transfer to the cafeteria funds, their meals-for-needee allocation of $253,000. Any sort of transfer like this that you have during the course of the year, we're required to report it, and not only just report it, but explain the reason why. And so this is when we'll go to your business management and say, we noticed this transfer of $253,000. Can you provide us some supporting documentation as to what it relates to? Page 42, now we have your amounts that are due to your vendors. 43, I'm sorry, 43, yes. I talked briefly about your current loan or trans. You'll see that on footnote number eight, during the course of the year, you had a trans, meaning you took out a short-term loan, but you repaid it before the end of the year. And that's very common with school districts, and that's footnoted on page 43. The footnote that a lot of people are interested in these days is, follows note eight, that's note nine, and that's long-term obligations. And why is that? Well, I think a lot of school districts these days are noting that they have capital appreciation bonds. And because of the amount of notoriety that has been reflected in the press and the media regarding capital appreciation bonds, that they're now revisiting it more than ever and trying to get a handle on that. You know, I can, and speaking of that, I can tell you that the best thing that you can do, the best business practice is to provide the governing board as much information about any debt issuance that you're undertaking before you approve it or vote on it. I believe recently, you did that where you had maybe two or three separate board presentations before you acted. before you acted. That's the best business practice that I would suggest. I think if you have that sort of procedural process when you're issuing debt, you eliminate the ambiguity that you have regarding what's in your long-term obligations. So you may not have had that previous, but you certainly have that now, and that's a positive. Capital appreciation bonds in general?
I would just like to compliment you, because as a result of your presentation here, it opened my eyes dramatically. And I think subsequently, we took action, in my mind, based upon the comments we heard from you during your discussion, so I appreciate it very much.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you. It's just, capital appreciation bonds, the notoriety is typically negative, and I'll tell you right now that they're not all the same. They are certainly not. And sometimes there are valid reasons why you would enter into a capital appreciation bond, so simply by having them on your balance sheet, within your financial statements, isn't a negative. There was usually a reason why. What's important is that, on a go-forward basis, you know what that reason is. So that way, when you get questions regarding, well, why did you support a capital appreciation bond? You can answer that question, because you've had those two or three presentations beforehand. They're not all the same. They are completely different. And a great analogy that someone, well, the LA Times article was problematic for me, because it was looking, well, let's take it in the context of a mortgage. The interest that you pay in your first month, and the amount that you pay in your first month, is completely different than what you'll pay in the 30th year, that 360th payment. But they're looking at these bonds and saying, well, why aren't you paying that 0.05% versus the 30-year rate? Well, if you wanted to, you would pay it off in a month. Who pays off a mortgage in a month? Who pays off a long-term obligation in a month? We don't. There's a reason why we call it a long-term obligation. So I think the article was a little skewed, to be honest with you, but most of us, just unfortunately, we accept whatever we read in the media. Unfortunate, but as I said, all capital appreciation bonds are not the same, and there's usually valid reasons why. You just have to know what they are before you vote upon it. So I applaud you for being prudent about it and making sure that you had enough information before you moved forward. That's good business practice. Following long-term obligations, we have to talk about what makes up your fund balances. That's on page 49. And then we start talking about a whole lot of things that a lot of people are, it's difficult to kind of comprehend. We talk about your OPEB, your post-employment benefits. We talk about your risk management policies of the school district, your retirement systems, the Cal STIRS and Cal PERS, and, you know, I can give you some forecasting here. We have a whole lot more of disclosure we're going to have with that, with some new GAZBS going forward. I'm sure you already?
Can I just stop real quick? And you went over pages 44 to 47 on bonds, real quick.
Okay.
And I would like a definition from you on page 47. What accreted? How do you define decreed, and how do we interpret?
That's a really good question. Okay, so accretion is basically an increase in the value. So it's harder for you to understand it, because you're looking at it from a debt issuer's side, but think of it from the investor's side. Think of, do you remember the old Series E bonds that you would buy? You'd buy it at $50, and then, but when it actually matured, it was $100? Well, that increase between, over the years, from $50 to $100 is accretion. It's an increase in the value of it until its maturity. So that's, but now, as the issuer, you have to think of it on the other side, because if you sold debt at $50 and it matures at $100, the accretion is not just the, now is the increase in the debt. So once again, like I say, you have to flip it over from the investor's side to the debt issuer's side, and really what's happening is, because you're going to pay $100 at the end, what has happened is, not only did the investment increase in value, but the debt increased over the course of that period of time, through the maturity period. The accretion, or accreted on page 47 that you spoke to, was how much in the current period of that original bond, how much it increased or accreted for that period of time. Over the course of that, you're going to see it continue to move. So let's look at the bottom of page 47. That's probably a better picture. What's intended to happen here is that $142 million will gradually end up over in the column, the next column, to a principal including accreted interest to date. You'll always note that the further out that your debt is, the accretion increases, or the value that increases, because it's just like, what happens is, is that your investors want to ensure that they get their money. And so the further out that you put a debt, the higher the interest rate has to be, because you don't know, because of the economy, in 20 years, whether 10% is the right amount for that period. They need to be protected, so investors always want more, a higher rate of interest toward the tail end. So that's why, as you see, it's not that much at first, but the further out maturity period you go, accretion impacts you negatively. So that's why I say, for instance, if you do a capital appreciation bond, and your accretion or your capital appreciation bonds are at the very beginning, and they accrete, and they mature rather quickly, then it doesn't harm you quite as much. But if you issue a capital appreciation bond that's a 40-year maturity, well, now you're compounding 40 years' worth of a high-interest rate.
So when somebody says you have, there are no payments the first 10 years.
That's not?
The interest on that bond is accreting for 10 years.
Exactly.
And just like, at one point, I hate to say it, but I had a loan where I didn't have to pay total interest. And so every month, my interest kept going up and up and up.
Exactly.
Now, when I paid it off, I got a great tax benefit, but it was a, as you say?
You got the theory, you understand it. That's exactly what happens. I mean, there's no such thing as a zero rate. I mean, you're paying for it, you just don't realize it, but it's on the tail end of it.
And you account for it in here.
Absolutely. That's part of what we have to do from an accounting standpoint, is to show that increase in value of the debt on an annual basis.
So that's why you show that the bond has increased, I mean, the amount of the?
Exactly.
Outstanding bond has increased, which we hadn't seen before.
Exactly. The obligation increases over time. That's the, that, how best to say, that's the trickery of a capital appreciation bond, is it doesn't stay static, it is moving forward. So your debt obligation does increase. However, it's going to also go down because of your debt service payments, so it becomes somewhat muddying. But we try to represent it here as clearly as possible by having three different columns, including anything that you issued during the year, the accretion of anything during the year, and of course, any redemptions or payments on that debt.
So anybody here in 2038 to 2042 is going to have an interesting time.
Their explanation will be a little different.
Okay, thank you.
And so I think I was working toward, I was talking to you, 52 on risk management, and I said, page 53, your STIRS and PURS systems, any commitments and contingencies, including your construction commitments, which you have quite a bit of on pages 55 and 56. Do you participate in any public risk entity pools where you're managing your risks for, such as your workers' compensation programs, property and liability, and that's represented on the top of page 16? 17 is subsequent event footnote, is always important, because what that means is, anything that occurs to your district subsequent to the date of the audit report, June 30th, 2012, and when we issue it, if it has a financial impact, we're required to report it as a subsequent event. And you will note that on July 1st, you did issue another trans, which is not uncommon. As I said, I mean, cash flow is always a big concern, and so you issued a trans to ensure that you had adequate cash flow. And then, of course, I mentioned to you footnote 18, which was the emphasis of matter that we talked about in the auditor's opinion back on page two. So footnotes disclosures are required. And in fact, there's a new requirement this year going forward, that your business management has to be more in tune with these, and so we'll provide, be providing them a disclosure checklist that ensures that everything that's pertinent to the district is included in the financial statements. So that's a new requirement that we're embracing. Yes?
I have a question about the trans. So the one we issued on July 1, is that, was that for the previous June 30 fiscal year, or is it then for the current?
The one in July was $14 million.
For?
For 1213.
So, okay.
The year that we're in right now.
We will pay it off on June 30, 2013, and we'll issue a new one, which you've already done the resolution of only 12 million. So we're going down.
Going, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
All right.
Just on health insurance, do you have any projections for what's going to happen down the road?
I would say that if you are a district that are providing your employees Cadillac plans, you're going to have to revisit that, because it's going to cost you. You know, and as an employer, I can tell you that also. And when I say Cadillac plan, if it's a very, very rich plan, the federal government, with the Obama plan, is looking toward equalizing the health benefits for everyone. So that's something you're going to have to look at. But all school districts are looking at that as well.
I think we are offering more like a Prius plan, or a Ford escape.
I was going to say Prius, that's probably.
Actually, it's too bad.
A Kia, maybe.
Starting on page 58, there are required schedules that have to be in here. There's a budgetary comparison schedule. The only place in the report where we reflect the current year budget of the general fund. The general fund always has to be represented in this budgetary comparison schedule. So if you turn to page 58, you'll see your original adopted budget, your final working budget, and then the actual expenditures or revenues during the course of the year, and then the variances. If you've been on the board long enough, you know that the budget process is very difficult, because the information that you're receiving from the state of California changes every couple months. So it is, it's the most difficult task that I think your business management has to perform. And not only did they do it once, but they do it a first interim and a second interim, and if they've filed a qualified certification, they get to do it a third interim as well. So they may end up having to do it four times during the course of the year, preparing a budget. It's a very difficult task. And as I said, the reason that this information is typically, the audit focus is not auditing your budget. We audit whether or not you have a budget process and a monitoring process of your budget, but we don't test this out, it's because it's a moving target. It changes that much. Unfortunately, this is information that you have to provide your bargaining units, and it's difficult, because you have to explain to them, this is a moving target. So however, having said that, we are required to report it in your audited financial statements, and so we do. And it does allow for you to look to see how you fared in the budget process during the course of the year. And in this case, you fared fairly well. So your estimates turned out to be a little bit more accurate than others. You know, and I'll tell you this, it's just always, before the last six years, I was always surprised when I would see school districts' budget for deficits. We've gotten used to that in the last six years, because it's actually a commonality, although I think your last two years, well, I know last year, and I was looking at some of your information this year, you've actually been positive as far as you have a deficit spending in the general fund, which is, you know, I have to applaud you. That's a very difficult thing, you know, it's a task to accomplish in this environment. But you ended up pretty accurate to your budget process as of 2012, so that's good news. There's other schedules in here as well, but the one that I do always like to draw your attention to during the board presentation is on page, actually, oh, well, 67, which is the reconciliation. So what this reconciliation has, and you'll see on page 67, there's nothing here, that's the good news. Had you had any adjustments that we felt were so material, that we felt, without those adjustments, your financial statements would not be free of material misstatement, we would be including them on this page here. So you had none. As I said, that is good news. And then on page 68 is the page that I always bring to your attention as far as the board presentation, and that's the schedule of financial trends and analysis. As I said to you before, it's the only place where you have three consecutive years, so it's meant to be looking at whether or not trends exist in the next budget year. We mentioned to you that deficit for the previous two years, in 2012, you didn't deficit, you projected a deficit for 2013, but it's looking as that you're not going to deficit, and as I said, that's good news. Long-term debt has increased substantially, but that's, of course, you're issuing some general obligation bond, so it's intended to increase. Average daily attendance is declining. I don't remember how you turned out this year, I remember testing it, but I don't remember the specific numbers related to that. But it doesn't impact you quite as significantly, because your high property tax collection, so most districts, I would say, well, that's troublesome. You have, I'm sure, a better idea of how that impacts you. And then I talked about the summary of auditor's results. We've already talked about that, but I did note that if you had any current findings, this is on page 82, by the way, they would be identified here, and on the subsequent pages. So on pages 83, 84, and 85, there's room for any findings related to financial statement findings. We had none on page 83. Federal award findings on page 84. We did have a state award finding on page 85. And then subsequent to that, and I know, I remember, one of you asked me this question during our board presentation, as to the management letter comments. What we'd like to do is, we do believe that there's always opportunities to provide you some insights to other areas that are of a lesser degree than what we deem to be a material weakness or significant deficiency, and so we include them as management letter comments, beginning on page 92. And so that you know also, I get this question frequently, how do we follow up on these? Well, we do. We, as you'll see, that the previous, the items that are deemed to be significant findings, I'm sorry, significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, they are required to be rolled forward in the audit report, and we have to identify whether or not the recommendation has been implemented or not, if it's a continuing issue. The management letter comments, that's not the case. However, we still do follow up on them. We will follow up on them in the current year to see the status of those. Are they, do they continue to be an issue? Did you look at our recommendation? Does it make any sense? Is there some other maybe compensating control that you put in place, rather than our recommendation, that mitigates any risk that we had identified? So we will follow up on that. And as you can see, we had some related to the clearance accounts, some payroll, time card observations, that we thought were important, as well as comments related to the student body. And these were items that we would have discussed at the previous board meeting. But they are identified in there, because we, once again, we do believe that these are areas that we can improve upon, and we bring them to not only your attention, but your business management as well. This is not as much of an emphasis for you, but for 99% of my clients, I keep talking cash, you know, and cash flow, and this is information that I did bring up to your attention during the board meeting, that in relation to the apportionment monies that you received, 39% of it was deferred to subsequent period. You're deficit it last year, 20%, so really what you're getting about is 48 cents on the dollar for those apportionment monies, when you really look at it. And, you know, think of it in terms of your own life. If someone told you, your employer told you, you're only going to get 48 cents on every dollar, how do you make it? You know, it's difficult. Proposition 30, a lot of districts are thinking, this is curing all their problems, and I'm suggesting to you, we're nowhere close to being at pre-funding levels 2007. So before we spend it all, let's think about restoring some needed programs and positions that we had to eliminate because of funding issues, and let's get our house in order first, before we, you know, just spend it all. And that's oftentimes, as soon as we start receiving fresh monies, that's oftentimes a natural recourse, but need to look at it first, because we're really well below where we were back in 2007. And that was what I came here. we were back in 2007. And that was what I came here to explain to you. I hope you have some more questions, or if you have any questions related to the financial statements, I'm more than happy to address them with you.
Thank you.
Oh, no problem.
Ms. Parker.
I have kind of a general question.
No, this isn't me, by the way. Is that what you're going to ask?
That was not the question. When we get these audits, and we love having these unqualified audits, and everything seems to be going smoothly. But unfortunately, from time to time, there are these huge financial scandals coming out of public agencies, and it will often turn out that they had clean audits going along. And I guess my question to you is, how can taxpayers, how can a community really trust that the audit is catching any issues with the district when they look at these, you know, huge examples in the media and say, how do we know that that's not going to happen in our own community, that this audit really is meaningful?
Sure.
So, and I guess a follow-up, a tag to that is who monitors the auditors?
Okay. Well, let me address that question first. The State Controller's Office is really responsible for, if there's any issues with the quality of an audit, they would be responsible for auditing an audit firm. It is always the case, if you're the auditor for a district that has failed, meaning that your district, your client had to take out an emergency loan from the state of California, you can ensure yourself that you will have a visit from the State Controller's Office, and they will look at not only the current year, but two or three years backwards. And they'll look at the sufficiency of the audit. So, they're the ones who audit the auditors. In addition, for federal programs, if we test a federal program, we always have, the state, well, I'm sorry, the federal oversight agency can always come in. In fact, in our office this week, we've had the Department of Transportation for one of our clients up in Northern California, very large transportation agency, and every year they come out. So, we're used to that. The state of California also, any of the agencies, Department of Finance, if they want to, they can come in and look at our work papers. So, that is just part of the profession. In addition, so that we have auditors come in every three years and look to see the sufficiency of our documentation and our audit process. And that's a requirement because we are auditing governmental agencies. As well as Peekaboo Public Accounting Agency, I can't remember exactly because I don't audit financial institutions anymore, but because we audit about 80 financial institutions, a number of them publicly traded, we have this group come in as well. So, there's a number of people who look at that. Now, having said that, your question about the reliance on the audit report is a great question because I believe that there is a disconnect between what the audit does and what it doesn't. The general consensus and the public perception is that the auditors find fraud, and that's really not our role. But that's just what is believed to be the case. Our procedures really aren't, have never been designed for that purpose. Now, that's changed over the last few years, but, you know, the truth is, is most fraud that you find is a result of good people coming forward and bringing to you their concerns. And so, how did our procedures change? Well, as a result of that disconnect that I spoke to you about, our oversight agency said, well, we have to do something because the public believes that the audit function finds fraud. So, how do we do that? Well, one of the first elements was, is that we had to now have an element of unpredictability to our audit, meaning that when we come in, we don't want your business management to drop a whole bunch of stuff in front of us and say, well, this is what you looked at last year, so here you go. So, we vary our procedures all the time so that we're looking at different things. But the other area that we've realized, I said earlier, people will talk to you if you ask the right questions. So, now, we have broadened our procedures to where we're talking to a whole lot more people. In fact, when I meet with your governing board, and I ask to speak to your board president, that's one of the questions that I ask, because we do believe that the public, if they have a concern, they'll bring it forward to you as the, you know, those charged with governance. And other people, operational people within the district, whether they're at a site or at the district level, we ask them questions related to fraud as well. But having said all of that, as I said, my experience has been that most fraud is not detected from a particular audit function. It has happened, but most of it is because people have stepped forward with a concern. The biggest school district fraud in California, millions of dollars, was because of an account clerk didn't understand where a certain revenue source, an unpredictable revenue source, was going. He never saw any checks come in, and he believed it to be his, the perpetrator to be his boss, and he didn't have anywhere to go. And so, he contacted law enforcement. And thankfully, we were brought in to do the work on it, and it ended being millions of dollars. But it does happen.
I just have to ask then, was it his boss?
Was it? It was.
It was his boss.
Yes.
And I will also add, so the board knows that we actually had a lengthy conversation recently, and that's something that happens with all board members, but we talked about a whole lot of things related to finance and schools, and so, that did happen.
We are also required to switch out Royce, the partner, every six years, so that we don't get chummy and steer him away from what he should be looking at. So, the whole audit team gets cycled out, or the manager at least. So, we do have that. And we bring concerns to Royce. Like this morning, I asked him about the printers in the new system and how we're going to have Dr. Cash's signature on them and who's going to handle that. So, we rely on our auditors a lot to keep us in compliance with our internal controls when we get a new situation like what we're talking about with the new financial system.
Mr. Herron.
I think every year I've been on this, our ASBs always have issues. And I noticed you have a whole slew of them. You had a whole bunch of them in this. I'm presuming they all get taken care of, or are in the process of being taken care of, so we don't have a second look at them when you do the audit again. But how do we deal with the, how do you want us to deal with the ASBs to make sure that?
Well, how would I want you to?
Well, I'm going to interject a little bit. The reality is, is that I have worked in school administration since 1990, and every single audit includes an ASB finding. And I know what the auditors expect, and I know what the controls are determined to do. But we're dealing with thousands of individual student and adult behaviors that we will always promise to do our best to rectify every finding, but I wouldn't want to leave anyone with the false impression that all of the findings you see here will be rectified a year from now. I would predict that we will continue to have ASB findings.
We send our ASB accountants to the training they have every year, and we continue to do that and send, ask the principals to go along with it, or the assistant principals, or whoever is the ASB, what do they call them?
Coordinator.
Coordinator. And then we also have Lacy, our dispersing officer, who is meeting with all our ASB accountants and talking to them and making sure that we get their minutes. And with the change of that position, we're a little bit behind on that. But we do require them to send us our minutes to see if those expenditures were verified and approved. But there are a lot, it's a complicated issue with so many people and so much money and cash, and so it's always an issue.
And I would say, anyone that works at a school site would say in very clear terms that the accounting requirements are way out of sync with common sense reality of how schools work.
I have a question about that. Do we, or does the ASB advisor ever spend some time, like class time in the leadership class or anything like that with the students, teaching them?
Oh, yeah.
Because what I find is that these requirements actually don't go away, because the second you go to the university and you decide you want to use your faculty members' research grants, guess what? You have to account for them too. And so, what kind of, what happens with the students? Because I don't think that the students are used to saving receipts and making sure that they're itemized or whatever it is.
I can tell you that that has gone over with every single executive council for each of the three comprehensive high schools, for sure, and that there's ongoing conversations about it, ongoing.
I was just going to note that we're talking about students being the ones that may make mistakes, and some of them may be reflected in our own audit. But when you look at the advisors, you know, I read recently, a couple months ago, in the Central Valley of one particular school district, that the advisor is actually the one that took the money. She was caught. So, I think, you know, there are those instances, and I think your point earlier on was to say that we are dealing with human beings who, if given the opportunity, some will do that. And that's the part that's challenging.
Well, and definitely the past six years more than any other time that I can ever remember because of the economy. Talked about opportunity. People will rationalize, and if the availability is there, and we're talking normally cash transactions, then unfortunately, it happens. To answer your question, as far as what I would, where I would always start, and this is not an issue with your district, it's an issue with every district, is that I've never been to a district where we hired somebody to be an ASB clerk with an accounting background, you know, that that was a requirement. And it's because, it's actually very cost prohibitive when you're talking about that. And so, if it were me, that's where I would always start, is, you know, bringing some people who really understand financial accounting. And then you really have to start, not just training the bookkeeper, that personnel who's the bookkeeper and the advisors, but every single advisor, and that would be the club advisors and whoever it may be, who accept cash. Because I always like to tell them that these internal control procedures that we keep, you know, going over and over with them, don't just protect the assets, but they're intended to protect them.
Yeah.
In the event that something occurs, then you can say, well, here, I have these receipts for these monies that were collected. I have this cash log. Because it's hard to refute allegations when you don't have that. And so, that's always our message. But start with, you know, and that's always a cost benefit analysis. I mean, it's costly to put in accountants at every single ASB where you collect monies. So, that's why I say, it's not a Santa Barbara unified school district issue. It's a school district issue across the state.
Ms. Edelson.
I'm just curious. So, there was something on food service transfer. I don't remember quite where it was, but.
I think it was on page 41, I believe, but we can.
Just a question. So, as far as the depth of an audit, do you, like, say, you take the information that, say, food services have given you to, you know, look at a transfer? Or do you go back further and say, what was transferred from where to where?
Well, that particular one, that's a really good question. That particular, most transfers, whoops, gosh, I apologize. I thought I'd put that on, thought that I'd put that on, as I should have, let me do this real quick. Most food service transfers are repaying the general fund for some sort of direct cost. Okay, that, so the district, basically the general fund pays for that, and then it's a reimbursement. A lot of times, it's payroll related. In this case, this is, years and years ago, this district elected to receive the Meals for Need. It was a part of the revenue limit calculation years ago, and so it was received, and all you did was moved it over, in this case. So, this particular transfer, the audit of it, had to actually look back to when that occurred or when you made that election to make, to ensure that, okay, here's these monies coming through. I see it's for Meals for Need, and that's why it's going over there, and this is the correct amount. So, whenever we have transfers such as that, we always look to see what embodies that transfer, why that transfer occurred, and does it make sense to move it back?
Okay.
Especially with cafeteria monies, because that's a whole different.
And that was just one example. But I'm just curious. So, you're basically working with the numbers that are provided to you by the district? You're not, are you going?
From the unaudited actuals first, then we look in at the next level, the supporting ledgers that support that. And then we'll then look at the transaction itself. Okay, this transaction was posted into the ledger, but who initiated it and why? At that point, I'm going to go over and speak to your business management and ask for an explanation, and then I have to do additional research on it. But it's meant to be pretty detailed. For those areas that we deem to be significant, we're not going to do this for every single transaction. Once again, you know, an audit is not, we're not providing total assurance. And if I failed to mention that to you earlier, then I need to mention it to you now. It's not total assurance. Why? Because we're not looking at every single transaction. It's reasonable assurance. So, we're going to sample, we're going to look at the population as a whole and say, what is the significant areas? And of these significant areas, let's sample a number of transactions within each of those populations.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have a general question. One of the things that I've noticed is, every time we have these, and we have actually a discussion, we jump around a lot, from page to page, back to front, middle, and so forth. How, what kind of recommendation or advice do you give a board member? Because I have to tell you that I always start from the beginning and then go to the end. And it's not until the end that I start going back. But how do you, I mean, how do you?
Oh, how would you?
How do you, yeah, what kind of recommendations do you give to board members as far as reading it, as far as like cheat sheets, or?
Well.
Because it's just, I always start from the beginning and end at the end, but then I realize that's never how it's discussed, even in the presentations.
You have to understand that the audit report is meant to be a high-level document, right? It's a high-level assurance. With that, when I present to you, I almost always start with page 82 or the summary of auditor's results, because I want you to know the outcome first. And so, that's why I start back toward the end, and then I start, I'll start moving around to the other parts of the report that I think are important for you as the reader to know. Summary of results, this is where we ended, and were there any other significant areas within the audit report? I mentioned page 67, if you, which was the reconciliation page. If you had adjustments, I think you should know. I mentioned page 68, the financial trends page, because I want you to see how the district is performing, you know, over a period of time. And then I'll always go to findings and recommendations, which are behind page 82, and any management letter comments. And that's part of my presentation, that's my presentation, but that's where I would focus if I were you, is you want to know the outcome. Because once again, it's a high level. What I described to you today is a lot more detail than I would ever provide at a board meeting, because we would never end. But I want you, as board members, to understand that financial statements is a little bit more detailed, so that way the next year, this year, when you get the, you'll start moving around, but you'll remember the presentation, say, okay, I want to look at some relationships that I saw last time. I want to see, how are we reporting our debt? Does it make any sense? On and on and on. But as a board member, I don't think I would get into that level of detail. I think I would focus on the outcomes. I think that's your role in this, is really focusing on how did we do overall in relation to the financial statements.
That's helpful. Thank you. Ms. Edelson?
You seem to know those pages so well. Is it, you have studied ours so well, or generally do those pages remain the same?
Well, sequentially, they remain the same, but as I flip through, I did kind of remember those.
Okay.
As I went through.
I was impressed.
All right. Well, if there's no further questions, I'd like to thank you so much, Royce, for your presentation, for all the time you've taken, and for.
Oh, no problem. Hopefully, it was helpful.
Yeah, it was. It was very helpful.
And at any time, if you want a refresher, or you have other questions, please don't hesitate. That's what we're here for, work for you.
Great. Thank you so much for your time. So, we will actually adjourn to go into closed session, and we will be back with any reportable closed session items. So, thank you.